I have five o'clock, so I want to call this meeting the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Quorum of board members is present. This meeting's been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We are here after a very long journey to get us to this point. It's an exciting night to finally reach our GMP for Lake Belton High School. So we're going to start with Dr. Muller, I think. Dr. Muller, you want to get us going off of this? Let me, as you're coming up, I want to say a special thank you. Dr. Muller, Dr. Kincaid has shared with me that you have spent quite a bit of time, a lot of time, focusing on these contracts and this project for the last several months, but especially in the last few days. So I want to thank you on behalf of the board for that. Certainly, we want to thank Angela Teckel, our counsel, who has just done an amazing job of continuing to help scrutinize contracts and help us all along the way for the last years to get to this point, but especially also as we come to the conclusion of this. And also, before you do that, David Bennett's here. And David, I just want to say a thank you. You've taken on extra duties and extra responsibilities, and we have looked to you to be our on-the-ground eyes and ears and antenna to watch out for our interests. I've been talking to the board recently about our staff make us look good. And you all, you three specifically, Dr. Kincaid and obviously part of that, are making, doing the work to help us be good stewards and be good representatives of our communities. So thank you to each of you, and thank you for your efforts specifically on this project. So, having said that, Dr. Muller.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pittinger. I appreciate it.
I'm going to hit your microphone on so they can hear you on the video.
There we go. All right. Years ago, I went to a movie, and the refrain throughout the movie was that there were big days and there were little days. And I would tell you that, in my mind, this is a big day. This evening, we are bringing to the board a guaranteed maximum price for Lake Belton High School. And I agree with the comments that you made, Mr. Pittinger, about this has been a long time in coming. I was talking to Dr. Kincaid, and she indicated that as far back as 2013, the district was planning for the next high school. And certainly since that time, scores, literally scores of individuals to include teachers, principals, directors, community members, first responders, both police and fire, city officials, specialists, and the list goes on and on. The health providers have contributed to the design of this building, and that design was translated into construction documents, which have led us to the pricing which you're going to be reviewing tonight. So it has been certainly a lengthy process, but it's also been a very thorough process and a comprehensive process, and one that I believe you can take great pride in. The guaranteed maximum price that you're going to review tonight is aligned with your original planning amount. In fact, when you look at all four bond projects together, Wall Street, Lakewood, Charter Oak, Lake Belton High School, the aggregate contract amount fits within your proposed bond budget. And I will tell you that that doesn't happen by accident. And again, it goes back to the quality of planning that you put into your process. I also would congratulate the board, first of all, for your insightfulness in that whole process. I'd also congratulate O'Connell Robertson and also Bartlett Cox for bringing together all of these different pieces that culminated in this guaranteed maximum price. This guaranteed maximum price includes an owner's contingency of $1 million, a construction manager's contingency of just a little bit more than $1 million, and general conditions that equate to 2.96% of the cost of work. And the cost of work is $99.69 million. Within this guaranteed maximum price is an alternate bid for 98 additional parking spaces, an alternate bid for artificial turf for the baseball and softball fields, and an alternate bid for two additional lighted tennis courts, bringing the total lighted tennis courts at Lake Belton High School up to 10. Also, there is included in the guaranteed maximum price an alternate for a roof over the batting cages at the baseball field. As was noted in your board packet, Lake Belton High School will encompass roughly 394,000 square feet and accommodate comfortably 2,500 students. I also think it's important to note that this facility, like many of the more recent facilities here in Belton ISD, has been designed with an eye toward instruction, quality instruction. And certainly, the research proves the power of collaborative learning. And I would tell you that this facility is really anchored in that whole notion of collaboration. Because within this facility, either you have classrooms that are centered around a collaborative learning environment or space. You also have spaces for staff to go and work together in planning instruction in what are going to be called think tanks. And these think tanks are distributed throughout the facility. You also have distributed dining facilities for students. And these distributed dining facilities are going to be located in proximity to those collaborative learning communities. And so the distributed dining also kind of makes the Lake Belton High School have more of a collegiate-type feel. Certainly, this facility will have first-rate technology in place from day one. And I think, kind of overall, the aesthetics of the facility with the natural rock commons area, courtyard area outside the dining, main dining facility, the color scheme, the amount of ambient light, natural light that will be pervasive throughout the building, the polished concrete floors will all come together to create a facility that the community will be extremely proud of for many, many years to come, and that the students will really be able to learn at a very high level in this type of facility. So I was going to turn the program over to Mark Hibner and let Mark speak. And then also, following Mark, will be Jared Stersinger. But before I turn it over to Mark, just real quickly, I'd like to kind of end my remarks with a very brief story. It's a story about George Washington. And they say that George Washington had a chair, and on the back of his chair was a sun on the horizon. And Ben Franklin said he wasn't ever sure if the sun was a rising sun or a setting sun. He always kind of thought it was a setting sun, until he got up to go forward and sign the Constitution. And he said he realized that the sun on the back of George Washington's chair was a rising sun. And certainly, I think tonight is a big night because this guaranteed maximum price, if it's recommended, will be a giant step toward a new day dawning in Belton ISD with the advent of Lake Belton High School. So again, I think you're to be congratulated as a board. I think you have brought the process along in a very fine manner. And again, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Muller.
And I'll turn it over to Mark.
Well said. That's a great summary, and I like the throwback to George Washington's chair. I've seen that chair. Mark Hibner's with us. He's promised me that he'll get a red shirt with Bartlett Cox.
Next time, yes. By Thursday.
Thank you very much. A Belton High School graduate, for those of you that don't know.
Class of '96.
Before you begin, I just want to mention, a year ago, last May, 2017, we entered into a contract with you all.
Yes.
At that time, the board approved the contract to do a construction manager at risk and to bring onboard Bartlett Cox to work with our architect in the planning. And just as Dr. Muller said, the planning process is really important. And we spent considerable time, I think Leo was with us when we even went over and went through that contract and what we wanted and what we were looking for as a board and as a district from you all. And I just want to thank you for that process over the last year to get to this point and through that establishing a relationship. We look forward to the next couple of years, obviously. But it's important that this is, we're one year into a, basically a three-year process. And we're not just starting this relationship at this point. It's been going on for a full year or so.
Yeah. And I just want to say personally, I'm being class of '96 from Belton High School. I can't tell you how excited I am to be part of this whole process. And I thank, you know, the school district for giving us an opportunity to be part of your team. And it has been a good 12 months. We've spent a lot of time working together to get to this point, and we're looking forward to the road ahead and getting this thing started. Yeah. So what I was going to do was walk you through real quick. Dr. Muller touched on some of the executive summary right here. But I'll go down to the bottom real quick, almost to the bottom. The total GMP amount of $106,413,538. That's the total GMP as of today. Our construction schedule is 26.66 months. And within that GMP, as he touched on before, we have a construction manager's contingency included. And we also have an owner's contingency, both included in that amount in addition to some of the alternates he touched on.
So can you walk us through contingency and how contingency money is authorized?
Yep.
And what that might...
Yeah. Great question. So two types of contingency in this project. One is the CM at-risk contingency. So that's also called the contractor contingency. That contingency, although it's listed as the contractor contingency, we have to go before the school for approval to use those funds for anything. And what those funds are set aside for are unforeseen conditions out in the project. Let's just give an example. Say we're drilling piers for the foundation. If we encounter groundwater and then we have to do some, you know, alternative methods of drilling the piers, that's an unforeseen condition because the documents available to us at this point don't say that there's groundwater down there, that we would encounter that. Okay? So that's just an example of, you know, higher level of what contingency would be used for. It's not necessarily to cover added scope. And what I mean by that, that would fall into the owner's contingency. If you decide you want to add, you know, some type of devices or some type of new technology, additional flat panel TVs, or maybe you want to change the type of flooring and add a really nice, high-end flooring versus what was currently shown, that would likely come from an owner contingency because it's more of an enhancement. Whereas unforeseen conditions during construction get funded out of the contractor or CM at-risk contingency. Does that answer?
It does. But in both cases, both owner and district contingency, that'll take board action. And so you would come to us to ask, or wouldn't, or what goes, some goes through administration?
No. The contract calls for Bartlett Cox to get written permission from the superintendent.
Okay.
For that million dollars.
Would delegate to you as part of that contingency.
Anything above what's listed here, we'd have to come back to the board for.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And that's the clarification.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for clarifying. I said district, and I should have been more clear. The superintendent, not the school board. Yep.
David will push that, David and Dr. Muller will bring those to me, and then we'll review them before they get approved.
And in theory, both of those could be zero, or they could be fully used and somewhere in the middle.
Correct.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
If you don't spend them, that's $2 million that we didn't spend. Savings for the district.
Right. I don't know if you want me to touch on each individual allowance and explain them, but within the GMP, we have set aside these allowances. Again, the contingencies are handled like an allowance. We don't spend it without getting permission, okay, on both of them. Some of the allowances also require a little bit further design and coordination on them, so that's why they're allowances. And as the design develops or additional information comes for artwork and logos, then we'll know what the price, and we utilize those allowances for those types of scopes. So there's several allowances that are built into this GMP, as well as alternates. Again, Dr. Muller kind of touched on before. We were able to take several alternates and get those included in GMP. And that, those range from additional parking to additional tennis courts all the way down to the bottom, last one, additional synthetic turf. So that's going to, the baseball and the softball fields will have synthetic turf as part of that $106 million GMP.
Just to add in there, really pleasantly, I don't want to say surprised, but very pleased that we were able to do these alternates within our budgeted amount and that they came in with really good bids. Those are needed things that we've been talking about, but I wasn't sure we could do them. So I'm really excited about that.
Kind of jumping ahead, let's see if it's on this next form. Well, that's, in this letter, we're also listing the alternates that were listed for pricing that we did not, we weren't able to accept or that we didn't decide to take. And then as well as below that, we have unit prices that are within the GMP. You'll notice a lot of those are related to piers. This was kind of like I was saying, when it comes to drilling piers, sometimes the testing lab, a third-party testing lab, can say you have to keep drilling. So we bid on a certain depth, but by their expert determination, they may say keep drilling lower. So that's additional drilling, or they may say you can stop there, and it's less drilling. So there's unit prices that outline how much to drill more or how much to drill less. Those prices are defined. But what I was going to say is jumping ahead to, I'm going to jump ahead to, wow, that's... Where is that document?
Very small print.
I guess it's not on here. There is, excuse me for a second. What I wanted to say was, I thought there was a different spreadsheet in here for our amount. The good news was, is that we took subcontractor bids on May 1st, and we had outstanding coverage on all the trades across the board. So we weren't really tied to just one number. We may have had, you know, four or five competitive bids on each trade, and it made it... So we were able to determine if we got good competitive pricing, and that's always a good thing. The other thing about this is on a job of this size, we might, we may hope for about, you know, local participation to be around 20% or so, and we're going to far exceed that number on this job. So that's a really good thing, local participation.
That's really important, obviously, from, you know, we're a local public, and we want to create jobs and create stimulation, stimulate the economy locally.
Yes. Yeah. So a lot of the major trades, you know, they're going to be, when I say major trades, big company, or, you know, big scopes of work like concrete and, you know, air conditioning and plumbing. A lot of those big components of the building are going to be performed by local subcontractors.
Maybe looking for page 14, by the way, in there to find that. If we're guessing right, what you were looking for. I didn't have pages on it. Oh, I saw a page. While you're getting to that, a related one, Jeff, I'm going to refer back to Jeff.
There it is.
Jeff kind of got us started talking about prevailing wage rate schedules way back. And when we first established, even a year ago, we didn't have prevailing wage rates. We were using Davis Bacon rates, but we have since been able to establish. Was that something you were able to use to save some costs for us? Was that, did that work out to be a positive?
Yes, that's always a positive because whenever subcontractors see the Davis Bacon wage rates, they're not real applicable to our area. And so a lot of times, there's trade, work classifications in there that might actually escalate cost higher than the market is actually paying.
So our being able to approve that schedule back, I don't remember when we did that. It was mid...
I don't remember which month. Yeah, September or September.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Sometime when we did that.
Right.
We were able to use that to our...
Yes. Yes. That, I would say that certainly helped keeping the job on budget.
Great. Is that what you were looking for?
All right. So jumping ahead, we did include Attachment A as part of this amendment. That's a breakdown of the different trades and how the numbers, how the numbers landed for each individual trade. So you have everything in there from concrete to masonry to electrical and plumbing and mechanical. And they all flow down into the bottom. You'll see the grand total GMP of $106 million, again. So that's how, that's how we got to that point. Attachment B, we talked about this. This is our GMP letter. We've covered this one. A few pages into Attachment B is our clarifications and assumptions. This is just another document that, you know, offers transparency on some things that we're pointing out that this is how this GMP was put together. And so there's qualifications in there that we're not doing any traffic signal work out at the road beside us. The documents don't ask us to do it, but we're just also pointing out conditions like that, that if anyone's wondering, we don't have any of that roadway work included in our scope. Okay? So it's just a bunch of clarifications regarding putting, you know, putting the building together.
So you got the 26.66 funds?
Yes.
That, I'll make sure and clarify for us, that's July 21st, 2020?
I think it's actually July 30th.
July 30th?
Yeah.
Okay. Assuming we...
Is that right?
...the notice to proceed tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that's what's reflected in our contract right now.
Okay. Let's go make sure, I want to make sure we know what these are targets.
Yeah. July 31st, 2020.
July 31st, oh, there it is. July 31st, 2020. Okay, I had 21, so 31. July 31st, 2020 is our substantial completion date.
Correct.
So we'll be able to move in and start school.
Correct.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mark? We'll get Jared up here in a minute too. Any other questions? Start with him, Mark. Great, thank you.
Thank you. We're really excited.
Looking forward to continuing our work with you. I'm not going to say begin because you've been working with us for quite a while. Jared, let me just go ahead and add a special thank you. You've been working with us for years. And we gave you a really big project because we trusted you, because you'd earned that trust on performance and patient and product over some previous projects that we'd had you work on. And so that trust has been well-earned, and you've certainly walked us through the process over the last two years, I guess, of design and working. And Dr. Muller mentioned all of our staff who are involved, nurses and coaches and teachers of all kinds of different areas, fine arts, all involved in the process of design. It's been a really good process. So I appreciate what you've done. We're really excited about it. How can, and you brought us along by showing us and taking us on virtual tours, which we've had a lot of fun. So tell us what we need to know about where we're at financially and big-picture project.
Yep. So first, we're honored to work with Belton ISD, and it's a great team here from A to Z along the board of working, everybody from the students to the teachers to the administration along the way.
And you mentioned that students involved in the process.
Yep. Yep. So very excited about that. Excited to see on Thursday the new logo and everything else that goes with the Broncos and new school and shovels and all that fun stuff. So as you heard from Dr. Muller and Mark about the GMP and kind of where we're headed from that program, that's looking at that slice of the pie of the bond work. And so what I was asked to look at is, what does this look like in the overall bond program?
Let me, y'all will see that right there?
So what I did is update the information. So the chart here on the top, this guy here, is the chart that we presented when we originally went through the bond planning process. So this was the year and a half, two years ago, talking about the cost of work. We updated this chart a few months back when we approved the Charter Oak, Lakewood, and Wall Street projects. And so you'll see, here's those three projects right now. I have that information graded out just so we can really focus on Lake Belton High School. The one thing that I will point out here is, at the end of the day, here's our $149.7 million bond program. And so that was what we had budgeted at the beginning. And so then, as we move down the chart, that is the planned, and this is starting to be the actual, so the current budget. So again, you'll see where we, I've graded out the three projects here on the right because those are underway, but here on the left, we have the hard costs, the alternate bids, all the information that Mark and Dr. Muller presented. And ultimately, we get right here to the final GMP amount, which is the $106.4 million down the line. As we go through each of these, so this is, that's what we consider hard costs, what we call hard costs. So that does include, though, the million-dollar CM contingency and million-dollar owner contingency within those amounts. But as we draw down the line, we have money in here for fees, PM and expenses, survey and geotech. Right now, we have $3.4 million in both the FF and E and IT systems that we're working out. We've got building moving expenses, construction materials testing. And at the end of the day, what we're still looking is, outside of the construction contract, there's still another $4 million in contingency at the end of the day. So there is potential, if you finish the work and there are no CM changes or owner changes, there would be $6 million coming back to Belton ISD at where we're currently at, at this point. And so what you will see, as you go through here and you look, right now, the total project cost that we would be looking at for Belton High School is the $125.4 million. You have the total of roughly $19 million for the elementary school, 2.5 for Lakewood, and 2.3 for Wall Street. And we get to that grand total right here of the $149.7 million. So to Dr. Muller's point is, we've added some alternates. The cost has increased a little bit, but we're still within the bond program, and we still have...
Looking at the two to three was what I was thinking. So that's even better. That's more than I was anticipating even. Wow.
And so there's great opportunities as we go through here and the district starts working through the FF and E process, IT, that those are options. And at the end of the day, if there are additional savings at the end of the project, there may be additional projects that the district elects to take on at that time. So overall, great context. I was really happy with the bids and the participation, working with the district and Bartlett Cox. And so we're excited to break ground on Thursday and get going if you approve the GMP tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Jared? That's actually even better news than I read it through. So that's wonderful. Really good.
Jared, quick question. Are the fees, project management, and expenses pretty well set?
So right now, the way that the, most of the numbers that are from the 5.9 down, the only one that I would say is solid is the 393. Right now, these are basically percentages. So this is $8 times the square footage. So in essence, it's an allowance at this time. And our fee is actually underneath this percentage. But part of the question was, well, does part of David's time get paid for by bond funds, that kind of stuff? That's more of an accounting-type side from there.
Maybe just to add to that, I asked that question earlier. You know, we had talked about, Dr. Kincaid had talked to us about adding a position to do purchasing.
We, I believe it's posted currently, but we had the option of paying the architects a fee to manage the furniture purchase and installation process. And we, after evaluating it and visiting with our staff and with O'Connell Robertson, opted to hire our own purchasing coordinator because we have a lot of instructional supplies that also need to be purchased, and so we need some help managing that as well. So we feel like we're getting more, although we know that O'Connell would have done a great job. But the value is in us being able to use that person to help us with the...
And again, that salary would come out of that.
That would come out of these bond program fees.
Comes out of that.
The auditor comes out, and we have a secretarial position that has been assisting Dr. Muller and David with the project too. And I believe those are all the staff positions.
And I think I heard, what I heard you said, basically, those numbers are budgeted that could, furniture and fixtures, for example, we might spend more or less. Depending on what board is bringing a recommendation, so. I swear that $4 million contingency also.
Correct. Generally, we've tried to be conservative, so it should come in under those numbers. But exactly that, depending upon the final, you want this type of chair or this type of people. It may vary some.
So speaking of FF and E, is the 30 days between that, you know, approximately 30 days, is that going to be enough time to get everything moved in and ready to roll?
Well, it will be tight, and we, you know, we've been tight like this before, and it makes for a really hard summer. And so we'll have to be really organized to make sure we get it all in there. Yes.
Half the school, ninth and 10th grade only, so it's a little smaller.
Okay.
Yes.
Because we can't enter there with, I mean, we can't start moving stuff in without substantial completion.
So the key actually is a certificate of occupancy. And so we've already started discussing about the phasing of the work and focusing on the admin and the classroom area first so that those could potentially get... the admin and the classroom area first so that those could potentially get certificate of occupancy or a temporary CO, and then you could start moving in. And that's where we'll work with the fire marshal and all those kind of things. So if nothing else, the furniture is there and ready, we finalize the building with the fire marshal, and then, okay, everybody can move in. So we're already thinking ahead on that, and we're targeting in the May-June timeframe, depending upon how everything works out, to be able to work through that process.
Like, this will likely impact our calendar discussion for the 2020, 2021 school year in that we might not want to start early that year. We might need that extra week that summer, so we might be intentional about going to that Fourth Monday and setting that calendar.
But that's two years away. They might get a month ahead in, in construction project and be done early.
Yeah.
It might not rain at those critical times, and life is good.
You might as well go two or three months, you know?
It's just a plan.
It's a good reminder that we're starting with ninth and 10th, yes.
Yeah, ninth and 10th, so you don't have to have the whole campus.
Some flexibility.
But there's a lot of stuff, obviously. But it makes sense. Good, good questions. Anybody else have a question for anybody? Well, we've, as we started, we've, we've been on a long journey for many years to get to this point, and we've set out to build a school that would meet the needs of our students, our staff, and our community. And I'm very excited about this, being able to do a project that, that will do that, just exactly that, under budget. That's an exciting, exciting partnership. So with that, we need a motion to approve Exhibit A to the AIA 133-2009 agreement between Belton ISD and Bartletcock as presented, setting the guaranteed maximum price for Lake Belton High School at $106,413,538. Is there a motion to approve? I have a motion from Ms. Jordan, second from Mr. Cowan. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, go build us a school. This is exciting. So you'll get a notice to proceed and get after it. And on that note, we'll be kicking up some dirt on Thursday with our community and celebrating a great partnership with that. Elizabeth and her team has, has quite the event planned for 100-degree day.
It is going to be hot.
So it's gonna, gonna be warm. Coach Morgan is here, and I want to just, I should have added this earlier. We mentioned about all the input from all the different folks. You've been a real important part of our planning, the athletic facilities and, and all the things we need to do, and appreciate you advocating for and helping us work through issues like, do we want turf at one school and not the other? And in fact, that's an advantage, not a disadvantage. And do we need two, 10 tennis courts, or 12, or eight, or what do we need? So thank you for that input. And also, and what do we not, maybe ideally, we'd like to have, but we don't need? On that note, I want to say again, we've talked all along that if we add that extra two tennis courts at Lake Belton High School, we need to be committed to adding those two tennis courts back at Belton High School because that's the tournament number of 10. And so I, I hope that as that comes up for you all in the near future, you'll be disposed to, to make sure we take care of that. So thank you, Coach Morgan. Appreciate you. We have one other item we do need to take action on. Dr. Muller, you want to address this? We've, we've got information about the construction materials testing services for Lake Belton High School and Charter Oak Elementary.
Yes, this is a recommendation. Robert Kishner Consultants is an approved vendor by the board for geotechnical and construction materials testing, and they have presented a proposal for Bel, Lake Belton High School of $393,000 and for Charter Oak of $98,700. That's a little bit higher than our budgeted, or our planned amount, but the planned amount is based on a percentage. The actual amount, the, our proposal comes through after specifications are, are determined. And so things like the amount of field that's on the site, the number of tests that will have to be done for concrete, and those type things can cause the variation. But both O'Connell Robertson and Bartletcock have reviewed the, the pricing, and certainly seems to be reasonable.
So we need a motion to approve, and these are budgeted in part of that chart that-
Yeah, these will be paid out of bond funds.
Earlier, to approve $393,000 for Lake Belton High School and $98,700 for Charter Oak Elementary. A motion to approve. I have a motion from Mr. Camden, second from Mr. Taggart. Any questions, comments, or favorite motion, raise a hand. Passes unanimously. Move forward. Anybody want to say anything? Well played. Chris Flores here, incoming board member, and, and I asked him if he had any questions, and he's all gung-ho too and ready to go, and so I'll take him as, as a yes vote on that. Thank you all. Jennifer, appreciate you managing the money on, for this project and making sure that everything gets paid properly and on time. Thank you all for your involvement.
Can I say something?
Please.
I just want to say how excited I am. This is, Randy said it's been a journey, and it has been a journey, but it's been a heavy lift to get from 2013 to 2018. It's taken a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of thought, a lot of planning. And we started way back with just visits to districts who had done this. And then we started learning, and we got our demographics build-out analysis done, and we've just, you know, it's just, we've just had to continue to build over the years to this point. And so it really has been a heavy lift, and we're really excited that we've gotten this far. And we still have a long way to go until 2020, and a lot of work yet to be done to get there in terms of staffing the building, furnishing the building, and just oversight. Tennis boundaries, how could I forget? That'll be the next heavy, really heavy lift. But it, it has been, it has been good work, and we are proud of it.
It's taken a strong team working together and using all available resources.
It really has been great.
It's a really great project, something to be very proud of.
Thank you for your approval.
Awesome. Great, exciting night, historic. Thank you, guys. Let's go to work. And groundbreaking at 11:30 on Thursday out at the site. And if you don't have anything else planned, ICE awards at PAC, right, for Belton New Tech High School at Wasco. This meeting is adjourned.